You're watching Access La Porte County, Channel 97. Coming up next is the March 16th meeting of the Michigan City Commission for Women. You can find more information for this meeting at www dot access laporte county dot org.
Order the Commission for Women's Thursday, March 16th meeting is 5:30. 5:31. Thanks for being here today and for your continued volunteer time for the Women's Commission. We're doing some good work and so it's just nice to have us all here. So roll call.
Sarah Jones.
Present.
Belinda Lee.
Present.
Christina Isabel.
Present.
Albertina Allen.
Present.
Bonnie Schaff.
Here.
And Fay Moore.
Here.
There's a roll call. A call has been established. I was probably supposed to pick up Linda and I forgot.
Oops. Alright. First things first, we need to approve the minutes from February, last February 16th meeting. Do you need a copy?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of February the 16th, 2023.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great.
I'm sorry, as a secretary, there was something in the minutes that I would like to request that a new motion be entered to the floor. So the discussion for the application to fill our open seat vacated by Ms. Nicole Coleman. The application was received and we did do a discussion. We changed the agenda. So we could discuss it, but in the minutes, I did not list the discussion.
Ah, that's okay.
We don't.
We don't actually.
It's the council that does this, I think.
Yeah, I had messed up because I thought we were, had something to say about it, but we don't. And it was not on the agenda at the March 2nd city council meeting, so I tried to put it on for the 28th. And hopefully will be, should be included in that.
Okay, thank you so much.
But we actually don't get to vote. I was wrong.
Okay, thank you so much for the clarity.
Yeah.
I stand corrected.
Okay, all good to go. And then I guess we're gonna need to do the subcommittee meeting, Fay, from the, from.
I'm sorry.
The subcommittee meeting that we have on March 8th.
What about me?
We will need to approve those minutes at some point. You can.
Oh.
Bring them back.
I did not type them.
That's okay, okay.
I'm sorry.
That was just last week, so we're fine. If you can bring that to our next meeting though.
Okay, okay, so we'll do that, next meeting.
Alright. And flowing right along, we've got the treasurer's report.
And I sent this out in an email, so I hope you all got it. But we began with a balance last month of $22,626.92. Our expenses for the month were $1,000. That was for the catering for our March 8th event, Tuna Kia bonds. And so deducting the 1,000, our new balance is $21,626.92. However, I did look in the, I can't submit the invoices for the expenses for March 8th, aside from the caterer, because that was not included in the minutes. I think we voted on them in December maybe, but it wasn't included in the minutes. And so I need a motion to reimburse the commissioners who incurred expenses for our event last week. That was Fay Moore printing of the program that she paid to the Beecher, $57.65. Christina paid $89.87 for tablecloths and supplies for the luncheon. And I paid $77.90 to.
How much?
Yeah. $77.90 to OfficeMax for the Women's History books. Oh, okay. So it was balance three, expenses Fay is $57.65. Christina is $89.87 and mine is $77.90. Thank you so much.
So you need a motion for reimbursement?
Yes. And I, hold up, before discussion, so I do believe that when we took the vote, it was when, before you became the treasurer. And so it is included that we included the budget for it for $5,000. So, but it's not in the minutes.
Has to be specified. Has to be itemized.
Was it in the November?
It wasn't in the, it wasn't in, I went back to October minutes and it wasn't included anywhere. So we just need to do this, that and the, and that even for the catering wasn't included, but we had discussed that and voted on it last month. So, and the St. Patrick's Day Parade, we had voted on that last month. And also $80 for tablecloth. You included all those in the minutes, so those are good to go. I haven't ordered the tablecloth yet because when we got, it took a few days to get the logo figured out. And then at that point, they couldn't get it done in time. Yeah. But I can still go ahead and get it if you want me to, so that we have it when we put it to be our logo on it. And Vidia, Vida Kuplo designed the logo. But it just says Michigan City Commission for Women on it. And it'll be on like the front panel of a tablecloth that overhangs a table, six foot long table. And it'll be, I think we had voted to get a purple tablecloth with the writing in white or green or something. I'm sorry, a white tablecloth with purple lettering? No, I think it was gonna be purple. We had voted on that. It's in the minutes. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. It's in the minutes.
Is that right?
Oh, is it a white tablecloth?
Yeah, I think it's white with purple lettering.
Oh, yes, that's right. Okay, yep.
We have a motion on the table.
Yes ma'am. For reimbursements. My second.
All in favor of reimbursements?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Great.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And then so we were just continuing the conversation about the tablecloth. We're still good to go with that though.
Yeah, I can get it ordered and I'll just pay for it and then get reimbursed for it. Turn in the bill as soon as we get it.
Great. And just to take note, Linda Comey is here. Present.
Present.
And then just we have a guest in the room, you can just.
Would you like to join us at the table?
Sure.
We have Denise Staid, that you will be.
Oh, great, yes, okay.
With the Michigan City Black Business Association.
Excellent, thank you so much for being here.
And you're actually.
Yes.
Thank you for coming. You're actually next on our agenda.
We're women are, hold on, because Denise and Angie are on the.
Right, so, and that's why I was saying, so because you're next on the agenda, I make a motion on the floor that we move the discussion down to after Women's International Day wrap up.
My second.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Great. Any opposed? No, we're good to go. Well, first of all, thank you guys so much for a really incredible roundtable luncheon last Wednesday. It was an unbelievable turnout. We had 77 people. I had no idea. I even took a table with, we already didn't even meet that table, but people just filled around one big table. So that was really exciting to have that, to have that presence. And to have such great speakers. I was just, it was, I mean, I have to say, I was nervous. Because we were all running late and all, but my experience might be different from everyone else's, but no, it was fantastic. And we do have a copy of the video. I can send you guys a link of that. Christina, you did a great job of pulling it all together.
You really did with the maven.
You were worried.
She was worried beforehand, but during the program, you pulled it all together. You kept everything.
I skipped things and I didn't say my big moment of saying.
Say it now.
I'm gonna say it now. It was a full moon on that night. And if those of you who garden, when you plant based on the moon, plants tend to do better, right? Things, everything will grow when it's planted on the moon. So we were planting these seeds for making change and creating some differences. And so I really hope that that is what comes from this. So I didn't get to say that.
What you're saying.
I think I keep a mood tables.
It turned out great.
Because one plants, one waters, and then there's increase. God gets the increase, so you've done well. It was beautiful.
And I feel like, again, we just scratched the surface on the topics and what we can do as community advocates. And so I'm still working on what the survey is. I will give that to everyone to get your feedback on it, as well as some of the speakers. I've asked them to kind of look at what survey questions we are sending out. Because we really do want to make a difference and so, and the best way to do that is to keep the conversations going. I also am pondering, you know, throwing out the idea that we do a couple more smaller roundtables, really focusing on certain subjects like accessibility, you know, advocacy, all the, you know, so we can get a bit more information about it. So with that said, I also have created a maternal health research with links, which, these are hard copies, so the links won't make sense to anybody, but if you want to take a look at all of the things that we have, I'm gonna make sure that this is printed on.
So you're sending this out to.
I'll send it out to you guys.
Okay.
So I don't know, just to, so you can kind of see the vastness of things that I've been looking at, things that are gonna help us as we move forward and asking the right questions. And the other thing that is just so fascinating and timely about what we're doing right now is it, it's, it's the topic, it's everywhere. Like health disparities and recognizing it and taking steps to do something is, the time is now. And I was just, Deb Chubb just sent me the White House Maternal Plan. And I'm just gonna, just kind of read a little bit. It'll be one of the links available to all of you. And also we will post that on the e Michigan, you know, our website.
Oh, okay.
So that everybody in town can look at this information too. But right now they have expanded some funding. And the funding will expand maternal health initiatives in rural communities, implement implicit bias training for healthcare providers, create pregnancy medical home demonstration projects, address the highest rates of perinatal health disparities, including by supporting the perinatal health workforce, strengthening data collection and evaluation, and address behavioral health disorders. It also includes extending and increasing funding for the maternal infant and early childhood home visiting program, which services families at risk for poor maternal and child outcomes each year. And again, like I created that community advocate outline, you know, just based on some research, but then it is so interesting that all of the goals are what they're talking about here. I'm just gonna read those goals as well. The goal one is to increase access to and coverage of comprehensive high quality maternal health services, including behavioral health services. This is to reduce coverage gaps, improve access to high quality care, and address geographical barriers to access. And these again are all questions we are gonna approach our local service providers, so we can have, you know, create some answers and do some things. Goal two is to ensure that giving birth are heard in our decision makers and accountable systems of care. To improve quality of care, hold providers accountable, prioritize patient needs and their experience before, during, and after pregnancy. Goal three is to advance data collection, standardization, harmonization, transparency, and research. To bridge gaps in data collection, invest in maternal health research of pregnant people participating in clinical trials, and commit to collecting and using race, ethnicity, and other demographical data to identify and prevent adverse outcomes. This is, that aligns with what FEMA is already doing across the state right now. They really are data collecting and something that the La Porte County Health Foundation is now doing as well. They just created FEMA here, as well as the Healthy Babies Council, so.
Also Christina, so we do the infant mortality or the infant mortality workshops. Then we do the data and we collect that data and it's sent down to Indianapolis and they send it to the Board of Health down there and that's how they find out what's going on in each county. But I noticed that said rural area. That did not include the Black Lives Matter community in a rural area, because that's not where we are.
Right.
So we need to take a look at that. Maybe they need to add something to that.
Is Michigan City considered a rural area? Is Michigan City considered a rural area?
Now, Michigan City might be considered a rural area, but they go out.
Into the rural.
In the county, out in the county. So we're not out there, so that eliminates us for the study. And it eliminates us from a lot of services too.
Yes, I did notice that we aren't, there's a couple programs, the AMES Program Alliance for Innovation. Maternal Health isn't here. Or, yeah, yes, neither is the Perinatal Equality Collaboratives, aren't here. And those are some of the things that she's, I think I'm gonna address in, so, yeah, yeah. Goal four is to expand and diversify the perinatal workforce to address the obstructive provider shortage, incorporate critical practitioners such as licensed midwives and community-based workers such as doulas into the maternal care system, and bolster and diversify the provider workforce. And goal five is to strengthen economic and social supports for people before, during, and after pregnancy to tackle the non-medical structural forces driving inequity in maternal health, including housing insecurity, food insecurity, environmental stressors, and economics insecurity. So that's just the outline for the White House's maternal plan. Again, you'll have a link to that and then under each of these goals are action steps that we can take a look at. We can then ask what's going on here, make sure that this is being addressed. We know that midwives and doulas are really working, so to know that there are a couple of doulas in our area is really, really great to hear. But we also want to know really who they're all reaching and how they're reaching people. And accessibility, which you, what you're gonna know more.
Yeah. We have a doula in our building. She'll have her office, I think, in two weeks, so she'll be out of our office, but she'll be right around the corner. And so it's wheelchair accessible, because you can come in the back door through the steps. And it'll make it easy for those moms that are pregnant to come and get whatever service they need. She has diapers, clothes, you name it, she's got it. And so then there are videos that she showed with, to the expecting parents. And then she goes all the way and then she follows them a year after.
Yeah. Let me know that the doulas are having a significant impact on Black women's outcomes. And so we want to make sure that we're really supporting that in our area.
So I just, I'm sorry, I just sent the report that she just read, I just sent to the commissioners. So because the links are hot, you may want to view it while she was.
Say that again.
So I just sent this link that, from the article she was reading from. I just sent that to the Board of Commissioners, you all just now.
Of the White House.
Yes, because she had not sent it out.
Yeah, I will.
You will, but I'm just saying, while I was thinking about it.
Thank you.
So again, I just think it's timely. There's more work to do on this. So once that survey is done, our next meeting, when we get that out, we'll get some more answers. So, yeah. So I want to say on that at the moment, so it's really not a Women's Day wrap up.
Correct.
It's, this is continuation and of that.
A wrap up of that event and continuation of things to come.
Yes. Did any, does anyone else want to comment on any of the, what we're trying to pursue?
Does the Women's Day event?
Yes, you just talked about that. And I just read the White House Maternal Plans goals and hopefully we can align at that.
And you have something there under your chair. Under your chair. Roll back a little more.
Oh, yeah.
I did talk to, I couldn't tell what it was.
One of our board members said they want to do a roundtable such as what we had. They want to do it on opioids. And I can't remember what the other thing was, but he wanted to do a roundtable discussion with some of those community members on opioids. And so we'll be talking about that on Friday this week, tomorrow.
Wasn't that one of the things that they talked about with the women and low birth and mortality rate? That it was people that.
Drug related.
Drug related and using. I just thought that was this awesome event. And it aligns and we can talk about opioids, because it seems like it's more happening, more to pregnant women. That's the impression I got from what was said at the event.
Yeah. I don't know how he thought, he came up with that, but he said, I want to, I want to talk to you about having a roundtable on opioids. And I said, well, we'll be out there on Friday, so tomorrow we'll be discussing.
The question also on that opioids. Do they have someone from the, like, police department that will talk? Because some women that may be on drugs are afraid to go and get help, afraid of being arrested.
The baby has a roundtable, you can ask for the police department and the fire department, because they come in contact with those people. Most of the time, if they've had a problem, before they get to the doctor or the hospital. So it'd be good to have them give their opinions and experiences that they've gone through when we have the roundtable.
So. In the Indiana Maternal Mortality Report, they do talk a lot about the issues of drug use, of obesity, and of course, a safe sleep, like sleeping.
We rate the highest.
Yeah.
In the county, northern Indiana.
That we ranked the highest.
So you said there's a roundtable discussion Friday?
No, I'm gonna go and meet with the doctor tomorrow and let him ask me the questions about how we did our roundtable. And make sure that that's something he really wants to do, but he has a lot of opioid patients.
And I would just say, you could add Mickey Webb with the La Porte County Drug Task Force. I know we went to DC at the end of January and did a presentation.
She would have somebody there from the school too.
Yeah, from the.
Because that affects if they show it.
Mickey Webb would be good.
That would be great. And I will say that you were approached by the Michigan City Chamber of Commerce of hosting more roundtables, so maybe we can partner with them.
And the event is already on Alco, on video on demand.
Oh, is it?
Yeah. It's really good.
I need to get some of those pictures from Kevin so I can send it to everybody.
Great.
So can I, so can I recommend, so oftentimes, so when you get those links, is it possible that you can send them? And also perhaps we can have them posted, because getting to the video on demand through Alco takes a few steps. But if we just embed the link, it's one step from viewing.
I just made a note to put it on Facebook.
Thank you. Thank you, media.
The next Congress, we ask this out committee, thank you, Sarah. And maybe we can, you can add that to the minutes next month.
Thank you.
And then it will be up there. Yeah, so I feel good that we're on path and that we're, you know, that we have a possibility of doing something. One thing that I also think that is interesting is the mobile healthcare units. You know, I was talking to my, my mom in Columbus, Ohio, and my dad is an OB-GYN, I guess that's why I'm so interested in this subject matter. But in Columbus, they've had mobile OB-GYN services that would go to the high schools to work with, you know, to let people know. It'd be amazing. And I think education is key, you know. When we are allowed to expose, you know, what age can we expose young people to necessary information? In our state is challenging, so I think there's a big push there.
I don't know, we can, we used to have a program here called Even Start. I couldn't think of it last time we were here. And so some of those girls that came to the program at the alternative school. And my issue with that was they did not offer them the same classes as the high school students had. Just because they were pregnant or had had a baby didn't mean they didn't want to go off to college. And so we fought back and forth about giving them algebra instead of high school math. You mean, it was high school math wanted to do. And some of those kids were like 3.7, grade point eight, so you know, it was just taking them down a notch. So we had to petition the school, but during the Even Start program, we talked about safe sex. We talked about condoms, female condoms. We talked about a lot of things. And then we had a program at the Women's Shelter. And I just took them out the back and laid them on the table and explained how you use them and not to worry about it. And you know, sometimes people are kind of, kind of shy and they really don't want to talk about things. But when you get down to the nitty gritty, it's all about safe health. You know, and so we could do that again.
Now, we do have a lot of those things in my office.
Yes, that would be.
Yeah, they still have that, they have a program like that still in South Bend, that's called Head Start, where the high school students that have kids are able to participate in Head Start. They go to school there. One of my late sister, she runs the program in South Bend.
And that was, that was a very good program. I think they just lost their funding. I don't know why that was, but a lot of those kids graduated and went off to college. But I was trying to make sure they had the college courses they needed. You just can't give them biology and, you know, general math.
Yeah.
You know, some of those were very bright girls. And then along with that, the boys were able to come and feed the babies. And so that gave that guy a chance to interact too. But our biggest thing was learning them how to have songs and finger plays, touch their hands, their toes, their feet and all that, and talk to the baby. And then let them eat with their hands, because that's how they start out. And so it was a very good program, just didn't last long enough.
That would be interesting then to kind of research what programs we do have in our community right now.
We didn't have those programs. We had a program, we had, I think, four or five sites in the city. We went to the Market Mall, we went to Lakeland Estates, we went to the Martin Luther King Center, and then we went to the Women's Shelter on the West Side. And we did the program, Early Learning, Early Reading. And so each child that came to those programs, we would, once a week, they got a book. The parents were encouraged to come and sit with them. And we taught the parents how to do the finger plays, how the toes and fingers and stuff. They could hear language and that baby talk. So it was a good program.
So even though we don't have those programs, and I do think it's a beautiful idea, there is currently a program called the Dolly Parton Imagination Library, which is being offered through a grant, I'm starting to name the grant, it's the La Porte County School Spring Branch. The program from birth to five years old, after you enter into the program, they'll send you your child a book for the next, from birth to five. And I sent that information out as a public notice, and I'm sorry, I didn't send it to all the commissioners, but there are some really great programs going on out there, so perhaps we can partner along again.
I know that Indiana United, where I sit on that board, that we are supporting that.
Oh, thank you so much.
That Dolly Parton, that, so it's, and it was, I had never heard of it.
I had never heard of it.
And there are multiple communities are getting the money, but I know that some of the funding, because most of our funding is to, we provide funding to local United Ways, but we receive the Lilly endowed, we receive funding from Lilly, the Indiana United Way. Then we push it out through grants, through the other communities. So I know that's one, one of the initiatives that is being discussed quite a bit now. And I was kind of like, what? I never heard of it, but it's big.
It's a good program.
That's another one of those things where there's lots of resources. You just have to know where to find. Junberg offers resources for new mothers. There's the, there's another one, I can't remember. Yeah, there's, there's a few of them that do, like the incentives with the books and things like that. You just have to know where to look.
And that is why this commission is compiling a resource list.
And before you came in, I was reading the White House maternal plan, because there is a lot of funding available right now in these researches and even studying what language is being spoken to patients at the hospital right now. Like we can inquire, I mean, there's, you know, we need to know, to recognize, to make change in that area. So it's interesting that there is a fair amount of funding right now, it's just letting people know it's available and how we can push the change. Anything else on the healthcare?
No, to just let them know what happened, since they weren't here, just let them know what happened.
What?
Who? Our guests. We moved you all on the agenda, so we talked about the Women's International Day wrap-up. So we moved the agenda, so you all will be here present to speak about Juneteenth, so.
Yes, good. So yeah, that's where we are. So now we are finished there with our wrap-up of our incredible Women's International Day. And we are on to the Juneteenth. And I'm going to thank Denise and Jackie for coming in to share with us the program that you guys have in the plant. Thank you for having us.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
My name is Jacqueline Jones, and Denise and I are coordinating the Juneteenth for 2023. Our theme this year is unified in, unified, God bless you, unified in freedom. And that event is a community event, and it would take place Sunday, June 18th, at God Forming Amphitheater, right here in Michigan City, La Porte County. It is a community event. It's two portions, two components, but also again, we're being unified in this. One of the portions is the activities that's taking place at the God Forming Theater. And those will include a lot of activities. Father's Day, I believe, is on that particular day of the celebration, that Sunday. So kicking it off in prayer, unified prayer first of all. And then we're going to have a father's engagement workout. So that would be dads working out with youth, their sons or daughters. And then even if they, a child doesn't have a father or whatnot present, they can still work out with that child, you know. We don't want any child left behind, we're going to save that model. Also, not only will it be a dad's, father's engagement, the workout, also women. We will be able to have workouts with women in the park as well. Also, there will be a male physician, and he will present topics for male health, the importance of male health. Also practitioner is planned to speak on women's health. A lot of entertainment that will include youth, seniors, the whole entire community, I would say. We're going to have a portion where it's youth entertainment, which will include like drill teams, praise dancers, youth choirs, also we will have gospel choirs. We will also have pending a gentleman playing jazz on the saxophone. He's also a DJ. It's being planned for a gentleman to come in and instruct line dancing. So it's a wide range of entertainment, poetry. So it's throughout that evening. Again, the admission is free, because we want everyone to come out and be unified, because that is what the theme is, is freedom in, being unified in freedom. So it is going to be free admission on the activity portion of it, and also free hamburgers and hot dogs.
What time is it to start?
Well, we're going to begin it around one o'clock on that activity portion. But again, it's a component, we're working together, but it's two components. And then Denise talked about the father's grill off.
You'll still have the park entry though, if you're not in city limits to pay them, right?
Pardon me?
Because it's a-
They usually don't.
If you're not in city limits, but still in Michigan City, you don't get the beach sticker. So you still have to pay entry for that, right?
For the, yes, to get into the park.
Yeah, I got the actual event.
For the actual event is free.
You got a lot of trail creek and unincorporated, just.
Thank you for that.
Yeah.
Great.
Thank you.
So thank you. And then Denise.
Actually, it starts at 8:00 AM that Sunday, we are going to have dads who cook grill off. And we're going to meet some judges, people like to eat grilled food, so you might want to throw your name in that hat. Hopefully, the guys will be done grilling for like 12:00, 30:00, 1:00 o'clock. And we're going to ask people to taste it and see who won the grill off. We're thinking about doing a two-day event, we've been approached by the NWA CP. We've also been approached by Indiana Black Expo. So hopefully, the second day is still being planned. We're going to be meeting with different leaders of the city that want to have something going on that day. We may have a fashion show, I heard we may have an event like. We're not having a big, big media, we always have a party. So basically, we're just going to have a good time, and there may be a hair show. We're just trying to pull as many people together. If you guys would like to be a part of this, we're going to have community resource. People, I'd like to see you have a booth there. And we need sponsorship, we're asking for, we're trying to make this free. And I think if we ask the park department, we may be able to get some free admission. You know, if you're intro freaking, you want to come, you should be able to come to any event like this. So we can ask when we go before the park board to see if we can get some free. How do they get your sticker for your car? Don't you have, isn't it free when you go down there? I think they give you passes if you have an event down there. You put out a sticker on your car and you just come in, you know.
No, but if you're a Michigan City resident.
If you're not, but even if you're a Michigan City, if you're unincorporated, you don't get that.
Unincorporated, you have to pay.
I live in Michigan City, but I don't have city incorporated, right?
We're going to ask for some free passes for that day to have at the gate for you, if you're not Michigan City resident.
And thank you for making us aware of that. Up to, because I wasn't seated.
Just for others who may not be able to.
Right.
So getting out of town guests, things I heard are right in your car or the-
Right.
Well, we have some vendors that are coming from Chicago, from Elkhart, so they're going to want a free pass also. We have vendors coming from Indianapolis.
I think they would be, yeah, they would be excluded from paying to get in, because they're vendors.
Any questions?
And also, we wanted, when we were talking about the community resources, I know you all were discussing that of making the community aware of what's offered here. And that's one of the main reasons why we wanted community resources at that event, is because a lot of La Porte County residents aren't aware of what is offered here in La Porte County. So I thought that it would be very important to have a lot, as many community resources to be able to be present, booth set up or whatnot. And also to recognize the businesses, vendors, local businesses that we have here in La Porte County, especially Michigan City area, that a lot is not aware of.
Can we hand them an invite, a personal invite?
For community resources.
To participate?
Yes, ma'am. Letters are going out to them.
I think I sent a letter to you already.
And then, yeah. And we also have like some ACLU information that would be good, you know, like what happens when you get pulled over, how do you, you know, how do you deal in school? So it'd be awesome to be able to share those resources with people.
I was just, oh, go ahead. I was just wondering, so the first component is activities, so with the second component, is that the grill? The grill? The grill off starts at eight o'clock, so it's actually the first thing that's going to be happening that day, and then we're going to announce the winner.
Okay, so that's the two-part component.
But there's a second day that we're trying to pull together. Actually, on Juneteenth, there are people who want to have something actually on that day, like a big block party.
At the park?
Yes, I think we're going to see if we can go to the boardworks to have the street closed. So between Fetter's and the amphitheater, I don't want to, you know, get hit trying to walk between the two.
Awesome.
Awesome.
Well, it sounds like things are coming together in a good way, you and I too, bye. I like it, that is so good. I'm very excited.
So, so she was sharing earlier before we got in, she received your packet, but she didn't bring it and it wasn't presented digitally. And so, and so we just wanted to make a public announcement that your packet was not here. My recommendation is, back several months ago, we increased our donation level from $500 to $1,000, and it's already been voted on as a commission. My recommendation to this commission today is that we give you the $1,000. We don't know what level that is, but that is my recommendation to this board.
Thank you.
And I make the motion that we support the Black Business Association and their journey for their event that's planned.
Thank you.
Thank you so very much for presenting.
Thank you.
Very pleased.
We'll deliberate when you leave, but.
No, it's open to public discussion. Okay.
Okay.
So we definitely can't do it without doing our budget.
Right. But it was a recommendation.
Okay, this is, this is the application.
Oh, thank you.
So we have options of sponsorship from $250, $500, $1,000, $2,000, $3,000, and $5,000. Those are our options right now that we will talk about. I just wanted to talk about one thing just while you're here, because there is such an interest in the potential of a Black history project. But really what I think it is, is the idea of potentially supporting a video documentation process. Have you guys, do you guys have anyone lined up to film the event? And create maybe a little nice promo so that we can expand in the next year?
No, would you like to help us with that?
That's what I, I would like to propose to us at this meeting, that, you know, that we do something where we can ask the questions, you know, to people to start creating a dialogue with how we, you know, if there's stories that people want to tell, you know, and finding maybe the right production company in town that would be interested in supporting this project. But I think it would be important for, one, to have growth of the event, to really document it, to start asking people what you know about Juneteenth, or if you have stories about Michigan City that you want to document, figure out what, maybe creating some kind of group that is interested in the potential of a larger Michigan City Black History Project.
So I know we have a motion on the table, but my question is, because we talked about the whole health component that day, and what that looks like. Would you be more likely to help support, like, to help getting more health vendors there? Or, because, are we charging the vendors?
$20.
Oh, this amount.
But the community resources is free.
Okay.
Anyone that's going to present a booth, if it's you all going to set up a booth, it would be free for you all. But for the vendors, we are asking for $20.
Because I'm just thinking about it, because we talked about the resources and everything, and it'd be nice, you know, the sponsorship, and it still needs a second, but are you, are you going to do it pending the budget? Because you got to look at the budget too, right? So will that be at the next meeting? So are we going to take, because there's a, there's a motion on the floor.
Yes.
It needs a second, but is it going to be pending budget review to be voted on the next meeting floor?
No, I think we would vote on this meeting.
Okay, good.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Because it needs a second, we're having a discussion.
Oh, okay, sorry, I went ahead to the next thing without long guessing. I wasn't sure if you were supposed to do that in front of them or not. I'm totally fine if you do it in front of them.
It's a motion, a second, and then discussion, because it's, because we're televised and open to the public. They don't have to leave for the discussion of them.
They could just, yeah, you could just go watch your car.
I know.
Which way are you having those? Thank you. You're interesting.
I made one question. So you said, you said that we would get a free vendor table then if we were a sponsor? Is there any, you know, our logo or anything on any publicity or anything like that? Do you?
Whatever you want to bring, as far as your table, is what I'm asking.
No, I mean, other than you're doing a lot of workshops, we have logos, other things. For sponsorship.
And we're going to have press release, we're going to have some flyers, we actually had one flyer already. And we're adding sponsors as we get them.
Okay, so like we would be named as a sponsor, we would vote to sponsor, we would get some publicity of some of it.
We just got a new one.
Is that we can vote it up?
Is that just so there that the publicity or something that we would get?
Is that on that, on the letter?
Yeah, she, where she gave $1,000. For providing, set up as well as break down.
On the other page.
The membership levels is what she's asking for.
They don't say anything there.
They don't break it down like that, but they'll, okay.
It's okay, yes.
Well, that's okay.
We'll go figure that.
But I can also, you're requiring additional documentation to make certain.
I can provide that.
I can provide it.
I just think we just need a nice, you know, continue the promo a bit so it can keep growing too. So.
The table, what was the motion?
Motion was a thousand.
I think we need to say we need to go over our budget first before we start saying how much money we're going to give. But I'm all in favor of giving a contribution.
Okay.
So would you like me to amend the motion on the floor?
I can amend the motion on the floor.
Okay, yes.
I'd like to amend the motion to say that we are going to give a contribution, but we need to discuss our finances first before we say we're going to give a thousand or two thousand. We need to know where our budget stands.
Thank you.
So we'll discuss that, we will discuss that later.
And will that be, so you'll have a second or a motion?
We will have a second this evening, but we just, in the, what happened, we, in the, years ago, we used to have the people present, and then they would leave, and then we would talk about it. I understand that we are now on a camera, and that, so it's a little different, but I think it's still the policy of the, you know, the commission. It all should be good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for inviting us.
So you had a motion on the table.
Oh, thank you.
There's a motion on the table, there's a motion.
And I gave a second.
I say that we do give a contribution, but we need to discuss our finances. But we will make a contribution, all in favor, we do.
Okay, all in favor?
I gave a second.
All in favor? Okay, any opposed?
No.
Okay, great.
Thank you so very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next round?
Yes.
All right.
Did you really ask us how last thing? You want to discuss?
So how much money we can afford to give?
We're 10.
Our balance is $21,626, and then we still have about $225 in expenses to cover for, well, we have about, we have $230, we have about $400 that we still have to spend on the.
Including the tablecloth?
Yes, including the tablecloth and the stateboard and the expenses. So then we'll have about $21,200 left after that. What kind of balance are we doing this?
So we were talking about disbursements, and I missed what you said, I'm terribly sorry.
We still have about.
So these numbers here, were there other numbers that were included that I missed?
We have done St. Patrick's with the tablecloth, so it's going to be more closer, around $400 that we have to.
Thank you, I missed St. Patrick's.
We have $400 less than that, than what we have now. Balance.
The only other thing that we haven't quite figured out is our next, usually we do something for Women's Equality Day in August. That's not on our agenda, but that is normally an event that we do produce. I don't know, we don't know what that is yet.
How much did we spend last year, $7,000?
Well, last year was the gala. I don't think we're doing a gala this year. I think that's maybe in every other year.
That's another five years.
That's special.
So we, we know that we'll do something.
Maybe we should do another roundtable. That was so, so successful and met some important needs here, I think. And it was, you know, pretty reasonable, it was under fifteen hundred dollars actually.
Yeah.
All told, so maybe.
Well, I think the doctor who wants to do a roundtable, and then maybe he would absorb some of the cost since I can do the only ones. So, you know, after tomorrow, I'll know.
Yeah, and then we should also start promoting the fact that we have grants to give, you know, because we haven't had very many applications.
I have promoted to quite a few people.
Okay, and, and is there a goal?
I believe some people are working on some things.
Wow, wow. Well, then, I think we shouldn't hesitate to donate, you know.
Just making it known around the community.
To this, because we have so few requests for money or ways to spend it, for that matter.
Well, to be honest, I've been thinking a lot about like the survey and what we're sending out. I, I mean, we actually need maybe some experts. You know, we might, we might need some resources for what we're doing to try to analyze that, I mean, we as a commission, we're not healthcare providers, so, you know, reading this information that we get back might require us to have a panel or other, you know, like even the, even if they're just the speakers who spoke, some of them have said they are willing to keep in conversation with us. But we, it is potentially that we might need to enlist someone that would have some expenses to it. Like, I don't think we're done necessarily with the costs of what this women's healthcare is, you know, is. Not that we're gonna spend twenty thousand dollars on it. And that there are resources available to help support whatever we would want to do as well, so.
And so I do agree with Bonnie, the, the roundtable was a huge success and relatively inexpensive to produce. And so if we look at even producing roundtables every other month at a cost of less than two thousand dollars. We had already discussed that our hope and dream for twenty twenty-three is that we would give away an average of a thousand dollars a month.
No, that was yours.
No, 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 that's, no, that's, no, that's how we rewrote the grant for the maximum to, there was discussion about increasing the amount, right? And so because we weren't receiving applications, we're three months into the year, and this is our first application.
The only reason we raised the amount was because giving Dune Brook, an organization that deserved more than five hundred dollars for their program, that's why we started the discussion to up it. Because at five hundred dollars, for anyone to think that, that as an organization, that five hundred dollars is gonna give you enough impact, it doesn't. That's why we upped it to a thousand. We, we had, we, when we were discussing the idea of letting people know we had grants, we, we kind of stopped the conversation because we don't, we wanted to keep us at a budget of ten at all times. So then therefore, we haven't worked out what we would be asking people to be applying for. If, an interesting idea would be that we are going to fund health projects this year, and we say we have five thousand dollars to give, applications due by. You know, and next year we want to do entrepreneurship. Five thousand dollars grant, you know, application due by this date. Because it's true, no one is applying, even though we have this, these, these funds available. But I don't think we are ready to necessarily go and spread the word because we, you know, I'm, I'm just talking, so.
Right, plus we haven't planned any fundraises. Because if you're giving money, you have to start having some fundraisers in order to have money to give.
Because I don't know, because I, I started, we had the gala shortly with COVID and everything, but I don't know how funds have been raised. Like, is, do we have like a regular fundraising thing consistently?
We don't.
We've been handed just.
We got funds from the Mayor's Ball when Ron Meyer was the mayor, and that started us off with our budget. And then we, as a commission, we did a theater thing as arts.
Yeah, uptown.
At uptown.
Yeah, and we, we did something.
There were two fundraisers.
But our first one was the one out, out, um, in Michiana Shores, that theater out there.
Oh, but.
Um.
We had it sitting out past October.
The summer theater, the summer theater.
Went to summer theater on, on beach.
Right, no, but some of it.
And then the Dune, Dune.
That was the only other one we had, we haven't had a lot. We haven't had fundraisers. Right, those are two.
We had two of them at the. Before we start.
Yeah, we had two of them at the uptown. Because I've been involved in those two, yeah, so.
Scott Tosi's was a.
So we have, so those are the fundraisers that we've had.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Because other than the gala, I've not seen any other ways that funds are raised.
Right.
We haven't had any other. So that's my point.
So let's, let's, maybe next month we put this on the agenda to really discuss what we want to do with the funds that we have and creating a kind of clear guidelines, because honestly, on the, there aren't any guidelines. And that's actually, I'm so sorry that I did drop the ball on that because there, the, the application that is on the E-Michigan site, there are no guidelines, there's no information about what we, what we pay, or what we offer, there's, there's not, there's no information except for the form.
They're used to be. They used to be.
Okay, because it's not up there.
No, they used to be up there.
Now, just the application is up there.
So can I recommend that you contact the city attorney and find out what it happened to our guidelines?
I think that's something Christina should do.
No, that's what I'm saying, I'm asking Christina to contact.
That's what I'm asking, that's what I'm saying, I think she should do.
Yes.
Well, first, I think Bonnie, like we said, we do, we did have guidelines on there.
Okay, it's just not there.
It was a separate document from the application.
Yeah.
But it was, yeah, yeah.
I, I looked recent, you know, when we were starting these conversations, I couldn't find it. And then I was like, okay, I'm gonna have to write a whole thing. His wife didn't happen.
Do we have a copy of it or anything?
Well, Bonnie and I didn't have, but it was one.
I'll check my file folders and see.
It was up there.
All right, so next month, we're gonna discuss our application and funding guidelines. Yeah. But we did, as a commission, we did up the amount to a thousand.
Okay, so the only reason that, that the motion to the floor was to give them the thousand dollars is because this isn't the inaugural, and they're reaching the community, right? They have a clear course and a clear path. And so if that's our maximum for them, this is their groundbreaking inaugural celebration, I think my vote is that they give the thousand dollars.
I do wish they had listed what the, you know, like we did for the gala, we listed if you donate two hundred and fifty, you get your name, and then you get this and this and this, and if you donate five hundred, you get this and this and this and this, and this one, and then, you know, and so like each category, you know, had another little, yeah, just.
In Sam.
Yeah, that your name would be mentioned, or that you, you know, just things like that. But just to know what it would be.
I think this is their first time at the rodeo for this.
Yeah.
And a lot of things that they may miss or, or may not get to have, and so it's up to us to kind of like guide them in that direction.
Yeah.
And, and help them do that, so.
And I think they may do broad, it's broad enough so that every, so many, a lot of people can participate. So I have a feeling that no matter how much you get, big or small, except for maybe the largest amount, that you're all, everybody's gonna get the same mention, everybody's gonna get access.
Yeah.
At, you know, and that any material that is, is, that is printed, that it will have all the logos on it, just like the Black History Month, regardless, they did break it down, but at some point, it was like.
They were all together.
Everybody was on it.
That's a together.
Yeah, and it's not like the gala where they're gonna hand out a fancy program to everybody, you know.
It would be nice to have fans though, where everybody.
Thank you for that recommendation. Because that's a good one.
And it will be hot.
Now, I kind of didn't catch all of it because they were turned and talking a little bit. This was for the Sunday, possibly rolling over into Monday, but not for certain yet.
They, they said they had partnerships they're working on. Because there was interest shown to them.
And I think, you know, that's great. Conversations were opened, and now it's, it's out to, to other organizations to, to make it happen. So I think that, that feels good, right?
Is this the same organization that did the, was there something last year out there on the Sunday?
Oh, I don't know, but they also produced the Kwanzaa Celebration, Michigan City Black Business Association.
This is the organization that did the Kwanzaa Celebration.
Yeah, we didn't do anything related to Kwanzaa.
Okay. Because, and, and to other people's defense, so, because the viewing public may not know, Mr. Biden did not write the law into place until June seventeenth, therefore only giving the entire nation two days to prepare for a national celebration with days off and paid holidays and all that. So to the credit of people who have started conversations, it's getting started this year. It's the second year of it being a federal holiday.
Yes, but not everybody gets that time off yet, you know.
Now, it's correct, but it has been recognized. And Juneteenth is the longest recognized celebration in the United States of America for the commemoration of the freedom of slaves. And it happens around the world in almost all countries, the celebration. The rumor goes that when they found the news, which is general order number three, when they heard the news, this thing in Texas, they broke out into spontaneous dance. And so that's why it's always been a joyous festival.
Is there a motion now? So I think the motion is to, um, to give them the a thousand dollars, to approve a thousand dollars. Is there a second?
You're going to have to come, the guidelines was that we're gonna give a thousand dollars. Okay, well.
You want to, you want to do more? Is that what you're saying?
No. Come on, this motherfucker, come on. I think that's a good, that's a nice little chunk of change. And, you know, but as you say, I was just wondering, are we gonna be able to handle it? But if we already voted, they're gonna donate.
No, 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 the vote is, the motion is on.
No, I mean, we talked about from previously that we upped it to give.
There was a motion that we donate, but we didn't say the amount.
Yeah.
She said a thousand.
So, no, what I'm saying is, didn't you just say that you already have in place to give a thousand dollars?
We voted.
Maximum.
Maximum, maximum for our donation to be a thousand dollars to organizations based on.
We had a max of five hundred dollars the last few years. We just upped it this year.
Just one, that is one.
Any other, I didn't hear the rest of you.
No, I, I was just wanting to make sure that I was understanding what the max we're gonna give.
Yes. Is there a second? Do we need more discussion?
So we're, we putting a motion on the floor now? Okay, and the motion is that we.
So I'll restate my motion. The motion is that I make a motion that we make a one thousand dollars donation to the Black, to the Michigan City Black Business Association for their celebration.
Of Juneteenth.
Of Juneteenth.
Twenty twenty-three.
Twenty twenty-three.
Okay.
Which includes celebration of June eighteenth and June nineteenth in expectations of community partnerships.
I don't think they're gonna say what day they use it on, we just want.
No, 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 that's what they, that's the only day they stated.
Just say the celebration, I'm gonna give the date.
The celebration, okay, for the celebration of Juneteenth of twenty twenty-three.
Unified and freedom, I like that a lot.
Because I just say, I seconded the motion that we give them a thousand dollars.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any opposed?
Nope.
Great, so they have been approved. Great. And I think we should have a table there for sure with materials available. Would be great.
I think we're gonna have to later on say what shift we're gonna work.
Yeah.
Yep, yep, yep. And what are we gonna distribute from that table?
Now, we have some.
Things on women's SUV and women's equality, there's all kinds of stuff we can put out.
We have the ACLU.
How, where do we get it? How, where do we get that? Or how do we get it?
Or even maybe something. Amazon, care, anything you want.
So the community knows we exist.
Yeah, that resource thing, if you can get something laminated, that you can hand out.
And maybe put on the refrigerator.
For sure.
I thought you think you need right away, like poison control and all of that. That would be nice to give out, and with our name and logo at the bottom here. Something a person can put on the refrigerator, or if I need to call poison control, it's right there, you don't have to, we don't have phone books anymore, and everybody does not have a cellphone.
That's true.
So, so then we will, um.
We can check out the cost of that.
That'll be great, so we will have some expenses aligned for this event with some printing costs.
We can discuss next month more.
And we will just, yeah, yeah.
And my recommendation is we, my recommendation is we set a budget, whether we use it all or not, based on how long it takes to move money through the control.
Right. Tonight.
Yeah, because I was gonna say too, maybe that's the printing we can get donated at the city. Ask them to print whatever we need at the city, at City Hall. And then, and take a little labor, but I do have two laminators. We could do something like that, but all, so I was gonna.
You're gonna make it a work party?
But what I was gonna suggest is, yeah, some type of resource park would be great. But I was just mentioning too, maybe some type of community survey on health.
Yeah, maybe the survey can be there.
And that, that's a good place where the target audience that we're talking about will be at. And maybe that will be the opportunity while people are out there to ask questions about their health. And I, I think that would be a good give back versus, you know, we can do the resource thing, but to collect data, I think could be very powerful on that day. Especially if we're gonna have providers and staff out saying, you know, ask, you know, women, have you had your, do you get an annual mammogram?
Yeah.
Have you, you know.
You had your colonoscopy.
Yeah, all those things, I think.
Exams.
And, and they don't, they're late one, and I think people would be more apt in that environment to maybe answer those questions. And that, so we need to take advantage of the day.
There have to be a lot of questions.
Yeah, one at once.
Yeah, if they have a healthcare provider.
If you're, you know, thirty and under, you give them this one, if they're this, because you want to know from the young people, do you drink on a regular basis? Do you smoke? You know, there's different questions for different age groups. So I just think that we could be very thoughtful in collecting some data that we could use for programming over the next year.
Yeah, no, that would be great, I would definitely support that.
Yeah, so I think that's wonderful. Can we also implement maybe a QR code for each one of those age groups? So they don't have to worry about our paper, because that age group ain't using your paper. They, thank you so much. So if we, so if we get a QR code, you know, they come in all sizes, this big, just a poster, you know, you're this age, between this age and this age, take this two-minute survey. You know, two, two-question survey, something like that.
If you collect the data right away, and we use paper for the ones that don't want to use the smartphone.
A Google form.
I think that's, I use QR codes for everything.
All for everything, and they're really easy to produce.
I know what QR codes are, yeah.
Google forms.
Media surveys.
Okay.
Or Survey Monkey or.
And the media department's gonna do that. It's two, Angie said she'll do it. So Ms. Sarah and Veronica are on the media team, and Angie just offered her assistance. I don't know if you've ever, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So maybe at our next meetings, we can try to have a couple of the question, you know, like, what would those questions be? We can each think about that, if there's something, that would be awesome. Great. Awesome. Are we good there? Um, we are down to the legislative update, we're a little bit over time.
Did we miss um Michigan City Black History Project?
Oh, okay, well, that is an idea, conversation idea. Um, because I I just keep, I hear Albertine stories, I hear even Bell saying that, you know, um, people weren't allowed, but people weren't allowed on the beach, you know, like, we need this history documented, we need to know what what what's happened here, maybe people want to share their stories. That I actually thought about it more like, um, maybe it's not us totally doing this project, it's really can't be us doing this, but um that there could be partners with the um LaPorte County Historical Museum or the NAACP or, you know, whoever it is, maybe it's the Bestic Arts Center, and this is a multi-year project. Where we're, you know, I I kind of thought like maybe at this Juneteenth, at the table, I think the survey is the better idea right now, but that uh they could sign up for interviews if we found a production company that was interested in this um program.
And I think that sounds lovely, that sounds lovely, but people do they own right now.
Well, but what they did, what they do is you have someone, I I went to an event at um Falco University and they had a room set up and they said, why, why is something important or whatever? It's the same question, you got to pick only two, one of two questions, and then you did a one-minute to ninety-second snippet. You said your name, you know, who you are, and then you talked about the importance of. And since it's inaugural, that might be a good way to capture the moment of the day.
Exactly, like what, how, what does Juneteenth mean to you, you know, so then we can, we can start promoting, we can build this.
We can talk to Pride and see if they have something set up, like a photographer or something. Maybe that's a partnership we could just kind of tap on to the day's forte, because that's, they should do it there too, they should do it. And maybe something that's set up and they get someone to, a videographer to capture the history, because.
So there's so much history lost, because before nineteen fifty-five, we're not really mentioned very much in the News Dispatch. And I went to the um archives in the library and they don't have anything other than if it was something that happened that was like they marched or they picketed or something like that, they talked about the patch. But there were other things going on in Michigan City that was much more important. Uh, we, we had a black female that had a radio show every Saturday, every Sunday morning. She was not mentioned in there until she died.
Yeah.
So you know, we we just lose, we're losing our history. We had an inventor that lived right here in Michigan City, Mr. Crossway, lived out in Eastport. Whatever that street is where the light is.
Did you say Mr. Who?
Who's his name?
Mr. Who?
Crossway.
Crossway.
Mm-hmm. He worked at uh one of the factories here, but he was an inventor. And then we had a musician that lived here. Um, we had a lot of history and I, some of them were named in that brochure that we had at our event, but I had a lot of them that I didn't get a chance to put in.
Al Benson, Al Benson.
Had a radio, he had a shop on Frank, on Mich- on Michigan Boulevard. He was from Chicago, he had a radio shop, but he had a record shop here. So those things just pass by.
Like at our event, you know, there's all these older elders in this community that probably have photographs or film, you know.
And one of them just said, I got my photographs, it was their kids. Or I got one from IQ and um somebody else. They just gave them to me when I started asking questions, so, you know, we could, we could build on that.
It's a big project, it's just like, how do we want to, you know, initiate it? You know, what can we capture at this event?
And it don't just have to be Michigan City, it could be United States of America, worldwide. Because I, who was the lady that, the first Hispanic lady that that went up?
Right.
And who was the first stoplight, that kind of stuff. Those things on our bulletin board at church.
Yeah.
Every month we change it and give somebody different. And so that enlightening people to the myth that happening in this country.
Yeah, happening in Michigan City, focus, yeah, the port, just so. One story is told and maybe, you know.
So the Michigan City Public Library off, actually offers a timeline of Michigan City and it goes from before the eighteen hundreds through uh present day. And it's part of their, I think it was part of their Geological Society Program. And it's really thorough, it's thorough, so maybe we can pick some of those things from.
It's not thorough.
Well, no, 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 I, well, it's a, it's, it gives a snapshot of some things that happened during that time.
It's Michigan City History for Caucasians, that's it, that's what it is, totally like it is. We're not in there.
No, no, yes, ma'am, I I do agree with you, um, but there is a lot of things that are hidden that we have an opportunity to bring to the forefront. And I really appreciate your knowledge base, Ms. Tiny. You have been a jewel in this community and working in this community for a long time.
Diamonds.
I'm going to get you some, I'm going to rub you some coal together.
Diamonds.
And so she, she is a wealth of knowledge. She is a wealth of knowledge.
Yeah, I came at the right time, I came in the fifties when everything started to happen. And then I was in a patch before it became the project. I worked there, so, yeah.
But this is a project that potentially has a lot of partnerships, like a library and museum. You know, it's an archive, it's a bigger project than the Women's Commission.
Absolutely, yeah.
To start at Juneteenth, I think we could say, ask this on.
Yeah, and then we could say, hey, this is the stuff we compiled.
Okay, we have some interviews, ask people what they know about Juneteenth and how, you know, then like, then it becomes a promotion to make, continue to make it bigger, but then it also could lead to a larger documentation of um community.
We need to talk to Alan Williams.
Yeah.
While he's still able to.
So that's what, I mean, there's a lot of people that we, we got to catch them out.
I came to my office today and believe, I found black history that I used about five, six years ago, all in a box packed in there, and I was throwing away stuff and I found it, I was like, Lord, I found. Uh, Annette Merweather, which I had a hard time getting a picture of, I had all that stuff, but I thought I, I just lost it and I found it today.
I would love to bring a scanner over to your office and just put all that stuff in there, what they.
So we have a lot of amazing ideas at the table today, this is really exciting and um um, just got to narrow down exactly what we can do, because there's going to be expenses to all of these.
Yeah.
Yes.
So maybe in next meeting, we're going to talk through what that project is, if we can find um a production company to help us with interviews.
We should check with um LaPorte County Historical Society and see if they're like the lead in this and maybe they know of an organization in the county that's already doing the videography. And can they name her name at the event and I can't find the little card, she's from LaPorte. From the Historical Society.
Yes, that was interested in her his- the history, so that's where I think I got the idea.
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, and built it up there, so, okay, great.
Yep.
Um, yes.
You have questions?
No, just a thought. Even looking towards, I don't know if they have anything but um like the uh video club or something with school or Purdue or.
I thought about that, high school, that could be.
Somebody, I I don't know what they would call it, but.
Yeah, they'll be out of school though. They get out so early this year, I wonder what they.
I know, I'm kind of, no kidding.
Y'all spring, y'all spring, y'all so early.
But maybe there's like MB Tech or Purdue have like a production program?
Then that's where I was thinking more like at university level, I just didn't know what they would call it.
And LaPorte Library has that uh media center in LaPorte now.
It's called Media Communication.
You know, a recording room, you can make films, you can make videos in there, they have a green screen thing.
And actually, I'll go, because you're here, we could actually, there's space is available for interviews, um we just have to have someone who can really edit and run the cameras. I mean, you know, that's what it comes down to.
Yeah, they, I mean, people do local programming here.
Yeah.
I mean, so we can talk to Drew.
Yeah, we'll talk to Drew.
I was thinking more on that university level.
Yeah.
So the money situation, what it is, so.
Yeah, because we could get a partnership in that.
That's true.
Okay, great, we need to move on.
My, my report is, well, it has not changed since last week. Everything is, all of the bills that we've been watching, um, the um, let's see, the long-acting reversible contraceptive that's um, that's prescribed for a Medicaid recipient. Once they receive it, if the Medicaid recipient does not return to get it, they had to send it back. So now um there's a law that it could be kept and given to someone else. Um, and then pharmacists prescribe birth control, that's still alive. Um, the long-acting reversible contraceptives requiring, uh, a hospital being required to provide this service um is still live, university housing for single mothers still live. And um, but the, some really important legislation that has um already died this year, funding for lactation rooms in public buildings that died, licensing of pregnancy resource centers, pregnancy accommodations in the workplace, raising the minimum wage, paid family and medical leave, lead testing for children under age seven, removing some limitations on punitive damages and civil rape cases, eliminating school textbook fees, establishing school-based health centers, safe storage of firearms in homes where minors are present, tax credits for employers who contribute to childcare and pre-K costs for their employees. Those, all of those bills died already this year, they have not advanced. So those were some fantastic ones that would have been very helpful to women. A lot of them were introduced by, and um, introduced by Republicans and a lot by Democrats, but, you know, but there were some really good, good ones that have, have died. And we're still watching a few good ones though, you know, for women's healthcare. There is um some, there are some election bills right now that are, in fact, that are going to um committee hearing on Monday, that one of them is really um, really bad, is really a voter suppression bill. Um, and that's going to be heard on Monday and then, and voted on. Um, and so there are two of those, you can look those up on the ion.gov website. Just go to, you go to government, the dropdown menu for government, and then you go to general assembly, and then you go to um bills in the legislature and you get a list of all of the bills. It tells you whether they're still alive or not, they have to go through a lot of procedures to stay alive throughout session before they get um, then voted on. But they've already, the ones that I mentioned have already passed in one of the, either the House or the Senate, and now they're the other one, and they have to be voted on um in both of them, so.
How long, are they in session, when is the session?
It ends, um, I think it ends the middle of April this year.
Okay.
I think this is a long session this year.
Um, it's, great.
And I sent this uh legislative update out to everyone, emailed it yesterday or last night or some kind of.
Great.
So you all have it.
Um, thank you, Bonnie, that's awesome, thank you. Uh, city council comments?
Um, just that, um, great event that you all put on last month, wait, this month.
Just a week, just last week, it seemed so far away.
Yeah, I was like. No, it was, I just think the, the quality of the speakers and what they were sharing was, was great. And I think that that proves that those roundtables are needed, I mean, I think that was some, that's the most information I received in one hour in a long time.
Yeah.
That was like information I could share with people.
Right.
And I just think that, you know, it was just a great, great um showing. And we need a greater space, you know, to do something like that, so I, I thought it was great.
And we thought the face was going to be too big.
Well, um, nothing really coming up on uh the horizon uh for the city council. Um, I know that I did uh get us on the agenda.
Okay.
For um the next council meeting. Um, luckily, I mentioned it at the last council meeting, because it, it, it triggered, I said, oh, oh my goodness, we have to. So we are on the agenda under boards and commissions to be able to present.
Okay.
Um, the only suggestion is that we get whatever uh to Drew in advance.
Okay.
Um, of the city council meeting for him to share. It said Tuesday morning, but I, I, I suggest getting it to him by Monday.
Okay.
Um, even if it's on a flash drive, to make sure that he has it come over.
Okay, and that's, and that's on the twenty-eighth though, that I come and talk.
No, our, our city council meeting is on the twenty-first.
Oh my gosh, I had the twenty-eighth.
It's the first and the third Tuesday.
First and third.
First and the third Tuesday.
What'd you read?
That's Tuesday, that's next Tuesday.
First and the third Tuesday, very much.
Yes, next Tuesday.
Three twenty-one.
Yeah, I thought it, I told the twenty-eighth.
Well, we have a support cast, so whatever we need to, we're glad they will be fine. Especially with everything that just happened with, even if it's reporting on.
On that event.
The event was.
Yeah.
But that's next year.
Right, well, because you have to report on our gala. I would talk about our gala.
Yeah.
And then just this event that we just had, I mean, those two things in itself.
The event we just had is next year's.
Oh, you don't want to talk about, yeah, that's true.
Okay.
So the gala is this year and the roundtable next year?
Gala.
Six thirty.
But you know what, I would say though, if you can, I would, the momentum is there, it would have been before your report. All I'm saying is that you can always report on it again, but while expressing people's minds, I would report on what we just did now.
Yeah.
Because people were there.
Yeah.
And that might give momentum for you to state that in the future, you know, we just had this event, I mean, we don't have a whole lot to share with you, but this was a jumpstart of what we're going to do over the next year.
Yeah.
And I would, I would.
Yeah, that would be good.
Yes, I, I would definitely say something about it.
Got it.
And it'd be nice if many of us could be there at six thirty, six thirty.
And early in the agenda now.
Yes.
Right, the arts committee was there and it was like seven of them.
It was.
And five of them presented, it was so nice though, it was really nice.
These were, they did a part.
Well, you did two yourself.
Do your presentation, put it all together, send to everybody, see who want to take what slide.
Okay.
Right, that's the way they did it.
Okay, okay. Great.
But even if we're there to support her.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, great. Commissioners comments? Good. Public comments? Oh, is uh Leslie Cole's on the agenda too for the city council to vote?
Let me look. Was it submitted?
It was submitted.
I will look right now. Let's see, for women's commission? Let's see.
I might have another copy of that.
I'll see, it was submitted to the clerk's office?
Um, I thought I sent it in.
About two, it was last month, it was February.
Yeah. Um, I don't have it in this folder, but.
Okay, well, I will double check, because we may, let me see if we voted on it the last.
No, it wasn't on the agenda.
Well, if not, I will have to do a revision and add it, because you submitted it. In time.
Yeah.
Yes, you're right.
Attorneys.
Could you, can you forward it back to them and say, this was supposed to be on the agenda, I submitted this last month?
Yeah.
And just resend it back to the, the um, the clerk's office?
I will do that. All right, any other co- public comments? Um, our next meeting date is April twentieth. And we have lots of fun things to talk about. Um, and if you have anything that you want brought to the table or to put on the agenda, please let me know um at least a week before meeting.
So I do have a couple of questions for clarity. I want to make sure that we were having, we were having a discussion about future roundtables. I was unclear if we had set budget and agenda for those because of the amount of time it takes to get funds. We could just set a budget during this meeting, just like we did for uh International Women's Day. Set the budget, that way we know what we have in place for the budget. And so when dispersments are needed, we already have the notes in the agenda for the comptroller.
So, so that sounds, I mean, that sounds like a, should put that as a standing item on the agenda moving forward.
Yeah.
To like, just. To like, just um, future budgetary items to, to maybe put it on your agenda for the next meeting.
Yeah.
Thank you.
'Cause that's a good, I mean, everybody seemed to want a roundtable.
Yeah.
But maybe that's where you ask the city for in-kind locations to be used.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I'm definitely down for them, I definitely think we need them, but, and they're helpful.
So are you asking for a budget for the.
No, I'm asking it to become a line item in our agenda, thank you for the wording, uh, for a line item in our agenda.
In the next, in the next meeting.
Yeah, all right, we got three things for our next meeting already. Um, all right, are we all ready, what do I do, I have to say?
A motion to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn, someone has to make a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Uh, any?
All right, we are adjourned at seven oh two, thank you guys, thank you.
No one opposed that.